Call to order, the meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente of Wednesday, October 7th, 2020. Second item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Zen, would you mind leading us in the pledge, please?
No, 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 please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is the roll call. Gabriel, could you please call the roll for us?
Yeah, Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Chair Protem Wu.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Blackwell.
Here.
And Chair Crandall, I mean, sorry, Chair Rulin.
Here. Item four, Special Orders of Business, we have none. Item five is minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first is the minutes from a regular study session of September 16th, 2020. Is there a motion or a request for a change?
I'm moving to approve the study session.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So that's a motion by Brown, second by Kaczynski. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Crandall.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Rulin votes aye, passes unanimously. And then we have the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of September 16th, 2020. Do we have any changes or a motion?
I do wanna make a little change. I'm not sure, I wanna ask you guys, on page six, about a microbrewery, it said a annual output of 5,000 barrels now would be allowed. Then the next sentence, it says 15,000, that would be allowed only in industrial areas. Did we consistently use 5,000?
Yes, that's my recollection. I think for, for a brewery in the mixed-use or commercial area, we're limiting it to 5,000.
I recall.
So the second number should be 5,002, is that right?
No, that's the, that's the industrial area which can do more.
So what happens if a brewery has somewhere between 5,000 to 15,000?
Well, if they're over 5,000, they would have to be in an industrial area.
Yeah, but the, but the language says, if it's over 15,000, that can only be allowed in industrial area.
So we're, I'm looking at page six, where exactly are you seeing that?
The top, the top paragraph.
Oh, the top one, I'm sorry, I was looking lower.
So he's talking about the, the in-between number, what happens at 5,001 to 14,999 barrels.
Well.
Not trying, not trying to change anything, but I just wanna make sure.
Oh, I see, yeah, cuz it does say, or more. No, I got what you're saying.
So we should maybe think about the intent, without going back into the details of the record. Our intent was that anything under 5,000 is allowed in a particular zone, anything above that, up to 15,000 or more.
Yeah, I'm thinking back a few weeks here, but we, I know we meant, in terms of the industrial areas, we meant that to be the same, and if that's a maximum of 15,000, then that's what it should read.
You need to strike the and more.
If, yeah, if, if that's correct, I just wanna make sure that we've got that right for industrial areas, and no more than 15,000 barrels per year.
Maybe we get up, up to, if we do, we'll have to do a record check, in a case like this, we'd have to just confirm that, Jim, and then revisit this for, for passing on the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we tied it to the ABC license.
Yeah, that's true.
Which is not to exceed 15,000 barrels, I believe.
That's my recollection, so it'd be up to.
That would be my recollection, okay. That would be my recollection, recollection too. Beyond 15,000, it would be not light industry, industrial use anymore.
So now, so we're really just striking the words "or more" in that paragraph. 15,000 barrels or more, we're striking the word "or more" there.
Or less.
Yeah, or less.
So be whereas, microbreweries with an output of up to 15,000 barrels is allowed in light industrial areas.
Yeah.
That, that's what I remember, but if you guys wanna check with the staff to make 100% sure, maybe we, maybe we delay it.
So what, what we think it should be is, whereas, that last sentence fragment should be, whereas, microbreweries with an annual output of up to 15,000 barrels are only allowed in industrial areas. Is that what we're saying? And so, Gabriel, we just wanna check that that's, that should be what the current ordinance is. So I think we just wanna, you know, that's our recollection, that we did it in the current ordinance, and that's 15,000, but we don't wanna risk changing anything, so.
Okay, Chairman, that's, that's what I recall as well, so we'll, we'll just go back to the video, just to double check, to make sure that it's correct, cuz these, these minutes will go to, will be considered when the City Council reviews the code amendments, so they're gonna wanna look back at the record.
They're already looking at these minutes, too.
So do we wanna continue these minutes, and let staff check on that and revise as appropriate?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we continue the minutes of September 16th, 2020, Planning Commission meeting, back to staff for review and clarification of the paragraph on page six that pertains to the output quantities, and it return at as soon as possible time for approval.
Take it.
The motion by Crandall, second by Wu, to continue the minutes. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Crandall.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Rulin votes aye, passes unanimously. Item six, oral and written communication. Members of the, of the public may address the Commission on matters of public interest, which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the Planning Commission electronically. Material may be emailed to scottm1@san-clemente.org. Transmitted by 3:00 PM on Planning Commission meeting days is recommended. The Planning Commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Gabriel, do we have any communications from anyone for items that are not on the agenda?
We do not have any communications.
Okay, thank you. Item seven is the consent calendar, we have nothing on our consent calendar. Item eight is public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And 8A is zoning amendment 20-258, lot consolidation ordinance. I will be recusing from this issue, as I did in the study sessions, because one of the potential lots in the inventory is within 500 feet of my home. So I will turn this over to Vice Chair Blackwell, and return when you're done with this item.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that, recusal, and so Kyle, are you, are you ready to do a presentation for us?
Yes, I'm here, good evening, Commissioners. Sarah, do we have a PowerPoint ready?
Yes, just one minute.
Okay. So I can start while that gets brought up. So tonight, I'm introducing an amendment, title 17, a municipal code, that enacts provisions encouraging the consolidation of developed lots for residential development, also known as a lot consolidation ordinance. During the short presentation, I'll provide a summary of what the lot consolidation ordinance aims to do, as well as an overview of the main topics and themes discussed at the two previous study sessions that staff in the Planning Commission participated in, in April and June of this year. Lot consolidation is identified in the city's housing element as Housing Action Plan Program 2, and is certified with the housing element by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Lot consolidation is an action program intended to help San Clemente fulfill our allocated housing numbers predicted for this year's rena cycle. Increasing the number of units in the city is often dependent on creating more dense development, and dense development often requires larger parcels. By providing various incentives to developers who are pursuing housing projects, the city has an opportunity, through lot consolidation, to help facilitate and guide developers in creating high-quality and well-designed development that the city would benefit from, and specifically on lots that can be conjoined, in which are currently listed on the city's residential sites inventory list, identified in the housing element. Next slide, please. So the residential sites inventory is a list of either vacant or underutilized lots, some of which are substandard. The list contains 58 parcels, 47 of which share at least one property line with another. The parcels on the list have been developed, or development is, in part at least, currently being pursued. Therefore, staff is expecting to provide an updated list of these sites to developers or applicants on an ongoing basis, and this will identify clusters of these sites that have the potential for lot consolidation. Maintaining an updated list is an objective outlined in the housing element for the purposes of this specific housing action program. Next slide, please. A clean version of the lot consolidation ordinance is provided as attachment A to Exhibit 1 in the staff report. The lot consolidation ordinance grants developers various incentives when they propose to build projects at the maximum density allowed. These incentives are listed here on the slide, or also in Section 17.24.230 of the ordinance. Some of these incentives include a reduction of fees, an increase in allowable density, a lower required parking ratio, reduced setbacks, increased lot coverage, and so forth. The Planning Commission, with staff, again, participated in two separate study sessions, one in April and one in June of this year, which gave the Commissioners the opportunity to provide feedback and make recommendations on how staff should proceed with the ordinance. The recommendations and the changes staff made to the ordinance since the last study session are provided as a table on pages two, three, and four of the staff report, and also presented as redline changes to the ordinance in Attachment 3. And Attachment 3 is the last attachment of the report. Next slide, please. So the most observable changes requested by the Planning Commission during the last study session would be to require projects to be reviewed by the Design Review Subcommittee, also to have all necessary development and use permits be required, in addition to lot consolidation, and reviewed against their separate standard findings. And then also, finally, to have the Planning Commission be the final authoritative body, as opposed to the zoning administrator. Next slide, please. So just real quick, I'd like to go over the submittal and review process for the Commissioners. So first, the developer is required to meet minimum standards, which are listed in the ordinance under Section 17.24.230F, and these minimum standards include building at the maximum allowable density, which will be 25% above the density for the underlying zone. The project must also propose that 50% of those additional units are made affordable. The project can then propose one of four buyright incentives. If the developer or applicant also proposes to use the available state density bonus, in combination with the increased density lot consolidation offers, then an additional optional incentive is granted. Lastly, the city planner then determines that the project meets the minimum standards. Design Review Subcommittee will review the architecture of the project before scheduling a meeting with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission meeting will include a review of the contract with the developer that ensures the affordability of for rental and/or for sale units. Yeah, next slide, please. Staff is requesting that Planning Commission determine the proposed amendments are not a project, defined by state sequel guidelines, and adopt the resolution recommending to the City Council approval of the proposed zoning amendments. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. I'd like to go roundtable, see if anybody's got any questions of, of staff on this item. Why don't we start?
Commissioner Brown has no questions. Hello?
Chairman, your, your mic's on, on mute, so I don't know if you were.
Yes, yes, wasn't sure which one was on mute. Commissioner Brown, yes, please.
No, I had no initial comments to make. I think the resolution's ready to go, I've read it all, in the redlines, in it's incorporated it all, findings are requested, requests from the two study sessions. So I think we have a pretty complete package here, I had no other additions or questions to add.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Wu.
Yes, Kyle, I, I sent you an email asking for some clarification about the parking requirements, in addition to a few minor revision on the wording. Could you, could you share with the Commission?
For the parking for commercial, is what you're speaking of?
Parking for commercial, also the FAR, then the encroachment of building elements, that would substantially reduce the impact, and so the finding we need to make.
Yes, so I'll start with the FAR. So the FAR language was changed, just to make sure that it's clear that the FAR will be .20, and that it won't be a reduction or an increase, it just will be .20, that's the incentive. And then going to the finding, let's see, let me. So in finding H3, which is a granting increase in building height or a reduction in setbacks, the last sentence reads, actually, it's all one sentence, so it would be, the decrease or increase will not result in any adverse impacts to adjacent properties due to an encroachment of building elements that would reduce such properties' access to light and air, et cetera, et cetera. So we would be adding, due to an encroachment of building elements that would substantially reduce such properties' access to light and air. Commissioner Wu found that to be a necessary addition, which I think staff agrees as well, in order to, when the Planning Commission reviews these projects, they'll have that specific language to back up any kind of recommendation they make. And then, going on to the parking, Commissioner Wu brought up that for non-residential parking, let's see, so the last sentence in, I can point out the section, incentive 2, subsection A, Roman numeral 2, on the last sentence, any use not, I'm sorry, when two or more businesses exist, the most restrictive parking ratio below will be used to satisfy parking requirements for commercial portions of the lot. And staff's intent there was, if there was multiple commercial businesses there, that you would take the most restrictive of whichever commercial business is there, and that would be the commercial required parking for that project. And in, if you would like to edit that, Commissioner Wu, or suggest an edit, the staff does not have an edit for that, but I'm, I'm open to hearing suggestions, and then also implementing that before City Council.
I'm, I'm only making that recommendation. For the parking, the language is a little, a little confusing, because when I read it, I wasn't sure if, if it should be the most restrictive or least restrictive. Kyle, explain it, but Kyle, if you can give me a real-life example, let's say you have a, a building, you have two tenants, you know, A is a restaurant, B is a general retailer, and how we apply in this supposedly to reduce the parking requirements. And so, that will give us a better idea. And then also, on the building, on the finding, my recommendation is to add a substantial, a substantial in the world there, because any encroachment, any, any, anything that's bigger than otherwise allowed will have some impact to light and air. The neighbor can easily argue, there gotta be some, so if we simply say, there's, there's, there's no impact, then it's very difficult to make that finding. But if we say, make sure it doesn't substantially reduce or impact the neighbor's light and air, then that's up to the Commission's discretion to decide. So that's the reason I wanna ask, I recommend adding this word there.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you for clarifying the suggested added language. And staff, please, that's justified. Going back to the parking, you wanted a real-life example, so these lots, with the number of residential units they'll be providing, we're looking at one, two, or three businesses on a lot, probably max, and so if you have, for example, two businesses, you have a retail, and then you also have a professional office, two different, two different businesses, you would have to go by the retail or commercial use ratio, which is one space per 400 square feet, and that would be for the retail business, and that's the amount of parking that would be required on site, is the one space per 400 square feet for the commercial business, and that would be in combination, I'm sorry, it would be included with the required residential parking. And the other side of it, go ahead.
So you're, you're saying on the, so we're gonna use the retail floor space and the retail parking ratio to decide the overall parking requirement. The retail parking ratio will not be applied to office floor area, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, that's the intent.
Okay, that, that's what I didn't understand well.
I apologize, so the language you're saying needs to be more clear.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, but I think maybe the Commission needs to work out some language to, to make it more clearer.
Well, Commissioner.
Well, Commissioner Wu, since we're here talking about it now, you know, this would be the time to come up with the language that you had in mind, and we can decide on that and direct staff accordingly. So why don't we go ahead and do that? Kyle, did you want to suggest some language?
Do you want to? I'm just going to write it out real quick if I can.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just give you a minute. While you're doing that, I'm gonna, but I see Commissioner Brown's light is still on, but I'm assuming he's just keeping the mic open unless you have a comment, Commissioner Brown? Okay, we're good. I see no other comments. I, while Kyle's working on that, I'll say that I've reviewed this as well, and I think it's, it's pretty solid. You know, we've had, you know, a number of discussions on this matter, and I think staff has done a very good job at assembling something that's going to be usable with some minor modifications. Those that Commissioner Wu has mentioned, I think are reasonable, and I think would be well fit for this section. And, you know, I'd be supportive of moving forward, but I wanted to just allow staff to complete the full presentation, and once we come up with some language, we can finalize it in our discussion. Let me ask you, Kyle or Gabriel, were there any public comments on this item?
I'm sure there are no comments that we've received yet.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Kyle, do you have enough to throw out there for discussion?
Yeah, so this is what I'm, this is what I'm proposing. So for subsection, so section two, subsection A to non-residential parking reads, "Mixed use projects may request off-street parking spaces based on the least restrictive of the following parking ratios for the use proposed. When two or more businesses exist, the business with the most restrictive parking ratio will satisfy, will be used to satisfy the total required parking spaces for all commercial uses on the lot." I feel like that's clear. I can read that again if I need to.
Is everybody clear on that? Does anybody have any, any concern or comments on the revised proposed changes to the resolution?
The language is clear, but I'm wondering if the, if the more, the business with the more restrictive parking requirement occupies a very small portion of the floor area, or a landlord may intentionally rent out a super small suite, and then that alone will satisfy all parking requirements. There is a loophole here that we don't want people exploit.
Okay, well, let's, let's put a pin in that. We've got some language. We can get into it in discussion. So again, looking for other commissioners that may have comment. I see none. I have no comment.
You've got one, Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I agree with you, Ken, that I think there's a huge loophole there in saying that just one space will go into counting for the parking, and it should probably be the retail space or the space that creates the highest requirement for parking of the whole building.
So if I could jump in real quick?
Not just by the amount of parking per square foot, but also the square foot of that tenant.
So if the language changed, sorry, this is Kyle, if the language changed to, "The business that requires the most parking spaces when using the most restrictive parking ratio will satisfy the parking on the lot," does that clear up some of the issue then?
That works for me.
Well, I think, I think boss's suggestion is good, but we don't need to say, Kyle, you just added something to that. You know, if you just calculate the parking requirement for each business, then pick the highest number, and we have that to satisfy the whole project, that will do. That will close that loophole. So we don't need to say, "Using the most restrictive anymore," because each business will have its own parking ratio to be applied, and we get the parking number for each business, and we pick the greatest number. I think that's boss's recommendation, and that will work for me.
That makes sense to me, too.
Most restrictive parking ratio, that's unnecessary.
One more question, Michael, if I may?
Yes, please.
This is for Kyle. Okay, we've established the building, we've got the parking. Now somebody with more square footage or higher square footage changes his occupancy. So is there going to be some trigger that says, "Okay, Mr. Landlord, you've built this building now. You can't have these particular uses in these other spaces because you will not comply with parking?"
So it would work, I mean, that's correct. So it would work exactly like how we look at businesses now. If you're putting in a new business that requires more parking, they would be required to provide that parking in some form, either actually provide it or maybe apply for a parking waivers. They have some options.
Well, I'm concerned that just changing tenants doesn't require any permits. So would a business license, is that going to trigger to be confirmed that parking is compliant?
Yes, that's a, that's a regular process we deal with. We get, we look, the planning staff looks over business license applications even when there's not a permit involved, and we do that mainly to make sure that the parking is adequate, and then also to make sure the use is legal and allowed in that zone.
Okay. Are you satisfied?
What we're doing here, what we're doing here is to, to the maximum, we cut the parking requirement about half because a landlord can divide a space so that into, for example, two, two leaders, well, two businesses with equal amount of parking, and then that one of the two alone will satisfy the whole requirement. But if the landlord go further and dividing into multiple businesses, I still see some loophole here. It can be divided into multiple small businesses here, and then just one will satisfy the whole property. Imagine you have a commercial plaza, each business, each renter or less occupy a small suite. Say you have 10 businesses there, and suddenly the parking requirement will be one tenth of what normally required. I'm supporting some relief on the parking. Just don't know if it's going to create some unintended consequence because someone will study this thing and take most of the advantage and exploit this.
Would it make sense to limit the number of businesses on a lot unless approval of discretionary permit for more? If you limited to three businesses on a lot, would that, do you think that would help the issue you're bringing up?
Is there a way that the planner or the staff can do a quick shared parking analysis internally? Doesn't need to be paid by a third party consultant, and use that shared parking analysis to decide the number of parking required? Is there any formula we can develop internally?
Not off the top of my head. Can you repeat that, though, with shared parking? What you would want a formula to do again?
Well, if a lot of time we ask a business to do a shared parking analysis, it costs a lot of money and the time, and it goes to planning commission for discretionary review. If the staff can develop a formula to do internal quick shared parking analysis, then that number can be used to satisfy the total parking requirement. It's going to be smaller than addition of each business, right? So that way, we can, we can provide some incentive, we can reduce the parking demand.
Well, we do that now, Commissioner Wu. I mean, we commonly do that because we've had, we've had many projects in the past that have had to utilize shared parking. So if you've got business park where, fill in the blank, 10, 20, 15, three businesses, whatever, X amount of stalls per square footage, but that use change and changes in each building, suddenly the ratios change, referencing stance, for example. We started getting creative with how that internal square footage footprint was actually going to function. If y'all recall, most of us were part of that discussion. We looked at the quote unquote Google, the new Google Office space where it was kind of communal, and we started to take a second look at warehouse versus office versus et cetera, et cetera. So we got creative on how we could do the parking count so that it would work for that use. In situations where we've got other uses on properties, for example, maybe a gym or another use that has its peak activity at certain hours, maybe it's, you know, primary or peak activity is between the hours of 8:00 AM and 12:00, there's a spike in usage during that time, and there's a drop off afternoon. So we could, you know, sort of, you know, double count some of those same stalls for another use that may go from, you know, 10:00 to 5:00, or 10:00 to 6:00, or whatever the case may be. That would be on a case by case basis, right? So when we're determining, you know, parking counts, if I'm understanding you, it's very, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an important issue just because we've got parking challenges like every other city in certain parts of town. We've got, you know, our allocations don't quite fit just the separate independent square footages of each use in an area. So, you know, we're going to have to get creative in some cases, but that's got to be on a case by case basis. Each, each new permit that comes before us, if there's an issue with parking and there's an exception being requested, then maybe we would, we would hear it at planning commission or, you know, perhaps, you know, at staff level, it can be, it can be worked out through maybe a reciprocation, a joint agreement with another parcel. But, I mean, I don't know how we would craft a line item in this code, or I'm sorry, in this resolution to be catch all for that. I just don't know how we do that.
And we get a lot of shared parking, but my point is those shared parking analysis that were done by outside consultant, they cost a lot of money for applicants. If this, if our planning department could come up with some quick rule of thumb or quick analysis, and we can do it internally, then that will help to get to a number that is the estimated parking demand based on shared parking analysis. So the number will be lower than normally it would be required.
Michael, let me jump in. I'm kind of really concerned about the direction we're going here, and Gabriel. We've got two different situations. When we do parking analysis and all, a lot of times it's for occupying an existing space that has existing parking, and we're trying to shoehorn any use. When a developer combines three, four, or five lots to do a project, he's most likely doing a spec project. He may not have any tenants signed up when it comes to the planning department to say, "This particular space uses so many..." There may not even be internal walls. It may be left up to tenant improvements to develop the spaces. And if we let them build a building that the guy says, "Oh, I'm going to have, one third of it will be this occupancy," and it doesn't happen, we've got a building there that may not be occupiable by multiple tenants. And I'm concerned that, it's fine when it's an existing building to go through those steps, but when it's a brand new building without tenants that are known, I see it getting so complicated if we try to give too many breaks on parking that we did a hole we can't get out of.
Well, that is, that's valid. So our choices are to start getting creative on the, on the language here, or we leave it as is. Commissioner Crandall, would you agree?
Well, Kyle, walk me through, if a developer gives you, combines three lots and builds a spec building that's all tenant improvement, how are you going to calculate the parking?
I think you bring up a good point that, sure, they're going to, they're going to agree, they may agree to the, they'll put a use in the non-residential portion that has the lowest parking ratio, and then they may be, they might be stuck providing that, that only, only that use, that non-residential or commercial use. I guess my argument against that is there's only four uses for non-residential that would be allowed a lower parking ratio, and in law consolidation, that's commercial uses, professional offices, group instruction, and public assembly. So you have commercial uses, which has, you know, it's an umbrella label for lots of different things. Professional offices, kind of the same thing. And so when you have group instruction that is kind of the outlier between all four of these, you know, it's kind of deciding, are we going to limit the amount of group instruction businesses we have in the city? Because all other businesses kind of fall under every, all the other labels. So I don't think that, I have no proof, I have no evidence that that won't happen, but because every situation is different, and every size of a commercial unit's going to be different than the next. But what I'm seeing is that commercial uses and professional offices are pretty, are kind of an umbrella term for a lot of different businesses, and I don't know if that issue you mentioned will necessarily come up. That's my take on it.
Commissioner Wu, any further comment on that?
No, I need a little more time to think about it.
Okay. So let's give Commissioner Wu a minute to, to look at that. Mr. Crandall, I think your light is off. I don't have anything to add to that. I, I think it's valid, but we start, we could really start going in a lot of different directions on this item. I was thinking that the way, the way this is drafted, we have a good foundation, you know, to use, this is a great, this can be a very effective tool for us to use going forward. If we can't come up with something a little more concise, I think we just need to let staff, you know, take this forward to council. But let's listen to what Commissioner Wu has to say, if there's something there that we can add to this that could be succinct, and everybody's on board with it, we'll just, we'll go with that. Commissioner Wu?
No, I don't, I still don't have an answer for it. I think, I certainly don't want to create a loophole to be controlled by developers. No. Let's say they combine two lots or three lots and develop a larger project, and they have a non-commercial spaces, and that's .20 FAR. If they divide into five smaller rentable, leasable areas, and then we pick any of them, we'll pick the largest or pick the largest one, or we apply the parking requirement and then, then one of that five business will satisfy the whole parking requirement, that doesn't sound right. I know it may not happen, depending on the scale of the business, you cannot have, you know, 50 square feet to be leased. Who knows? Maybe it's a new, new standard. At the same time, using the least, um, the most restrictive parking for one business, I think we already, we already discussed that.
Yeah.
So it's, I don't, I don't have a concise language I can contribute at this moment.
Okay. Well, the good news is Commissioner Wu, I beg your pardon, is that, um, this is staff's presentation time, so we have a little bit of time. We still have, uh, uh, commission discussion. So unless there are no other questions, unless there are questions for Kyle, why don't we go ahead and close that part, open it up officially for public comment? Gabriel, are there any public comments that have come in? Anybody since we started here that would like to add a comment?
Okay. So, uh, Vice Chair Blackwell, you're opening the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. There are no, no other public comments, if you received.
Okay, well, go ahead and close the public comment, period. And why don't we just open this up for official, um, commission discussion? Any further questions, you know, staff is available for, um, for response, but Commissioner Wu, why don't you go ahead and continue that thought? I'm going to go around the table here and I see that Commissioner Crandall has no comments, Commissioner Chichinsky has no comments, Commissioner Brown has no comments. I have no further comments, uh, but I see Commissioner Wu, you know, we're still thinking about it and that's fine. Does anybody have any questions of Commissioner Wu?
No, I, I support everything in this ordinance except for this one. I think it's worth, worth us to spend a little more time to study it. So that's all, that's all I have.
Am I allowed to, can I speak up during this, this portion?
Absolutely, Kyle.
I just wanted to just add one last thing is, um, so a, as, as, yeah, so we know this is supposed to work as an incentive, but then we also have the planning commission as the, the final decision-making body. And even though we have these ratios, the planning commission in D R S E will have an option to call out that the project may, may obviously not be providing enough parking for commercial. And maybe that's some reconciliation for, um, going forward with the revised language that we talked about, that it will be reviewed. I think that's just my two cents, maybe keeping that in mind, I suppose. That's all.
Thank you, Kyle. So, you know, we do have, you know, it's not a total give up here. There is still an opportunity to, to review any sort of deviation or, um, a situation where we may have a conflict, uh, parking counts and we need to resolve it. So we've got that. That, that was.
Okay. I like that. How about we just take Commissioner Crandall's recommendation that the, the business yields the highest number would satisfy the whole project, but subject to commission's discretion. In other words, in the finding, we add another finding that the parking issue, um, you know, will not, will not create a negative impact to, to the public space and enabling property.
Okay, Michael, can I jump in now?
Yes, please.
Bart, uh, you know, as an architect, and I'm, I'm sure Jen has been through this too, the last thing an architect wants to do is come into a city and with the amount of drawings we require to get through, to get to the commission and have something hanging over our heads that says, you know, I don't know how it's going to go. I don't know what they're going to say because we've got an ordinance. I comply with it, but you're saying it can be reviewed and rejected by the planning commission, um, for who knows what reason. And, you know, we've got, um, six good commissioners now and another year we may not. I just don't think applicants are going to be real crazy about coming in and doing a lot of consolidation unless they know the rules and it is very concise and correct of what they are going to have to comply with because they're, invest a lot of money in getting documents ready to go to the planning commission for review. And I think we've got to have it resolved and a rule that they know if they comply with it, they should get approval.
But I agree with you that, uh, that uncertainty is not, we don't want this uncertainty for applicants. So, um, do you suggest that we, we continue this item?
Uh, yeah, I don't think we have the answer right now. I think it needs very deep study and it's not something we can be flippant about. We need to look at all the unforeseen circumstances, take them into account. And, uh, maybe it's not quite as much of a concession. We can give a concession, but maybe it's, maybe we find that it's two occupants parking requirement rather than three. Or we make the rule be that this applies to three and then there's a new one that applies to four occupancies or percentage of square footage. But I think, uh, it's not something we can solve in 10 minutes talking about verbiage. I think staff needs to go back and look at all the, um, different ramifications and ways of calculating the parking where we don't, um, leave it up to chance for an applicant to get his approval. I mean, they want to have something they can count on.
I, I, I'm on the same page.
Think you go back and be resolved.
I'm, I'm on the same page. I think we better be prudent to being, um, having to rush it.
Okay. Vice Chair Blackwell, can I, can I ask a few questions?
Of course.
So, um, you know, I, I guess one of my questions are, um, I'm trying to understand, make sure I understand all the issues that are being discussed on parking, is one of the concerns that if the non-residential portion is parked at a certain ratio that in the future they, a different business may require a higher ratio and then that's not reviewed by the planning commission? Is that one concern that the planning commission is having here?
This is Bart again. Well, my concern is if we don't know who the tenants are, how do we assess the building shell?
And, and that happens already with some mixed use projects, like, you give an example like Santiago mixed use. I mean, they were parked under certain assumptions.
But nothing to this degree of, um, benefit to them. I mean, yeah, we usually make an assumption that, let's say it's all retail. Well, that's the parking we provide and then it changes if you get a new occupant with a different use. But we're giving, um, an extreme relief, um, without knowing what the tenants are. I think that's a dangerous situation and when the applicant coming in and spending all this money, even when they're looking at buying the piece of property and doing this, they may say, well, shoot, there's so many things up in the air that, uh, we don't know, uh, we can't justify spending money on the property.
What, how, uh?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Gabriel, how about we, um, uh, simply remove this non-residential parking portion out and adopt the rest of the ordinance and leave it to a future amendment? If you want to, if you want to get something to pass tonight, that I will support. You can immediately start amendment to this ordinance to adjust the, to add this non-residential parking.
How does the commission feel about, about that? Mr. Brown, do you, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I could probably support that. I know we've got a due date here because the housing element comes up for review next year and you get staff time, but I know the staff's trying to get something through. I know this is a pretty sticky issue and, you know, Barton's in, make a very good point, like, we need to have something nailed down so that when somebody comes in, in the door, they have a pretty good idea of what, where they're going and what they're going to get out of this deal. And the same token, it has to be simple enough so that the staff at the counter can give them a decent answer. And so maybe the best way to do that right now is to cut our losses, drop this section, continue, pass the rest of the ordinance on to, uh, the council that helps make part of the due date or the requirement we have with H C V. We have to have something complete in the housing element when it comes up for renewal and they're going to start reviewing all this stuff pretty soon. So we're not doing staff any favor tonight by continuing, but this seems to be the simplest way to do it since this particular discussion item, uh, by, you know, two gentlemen has already made, leaves a pretty good loophole. And I think, I don't think we have the ability to solve it here tonight. Let's get 90% of the loaf in front of, uh, city council. We're not doing staff any help. I know Kyle goes very hard, this was actually a study section, we should have discussed this before, we'll be missed it. We're not perfect. So I, I would support dropping this particular section out or in the rest of it to council. We would tell council that, we have another little section coming to you later.
That is very creative. I have a question about that. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Gabriel, Kyle, what are your thoughts on that? You know, parsing this out and sending the majority of it out and then with a footnote that there'd be a trailer coming for further review?
We, we could do something like that. So here's one way we could do that, approve everything else, right? Or...
Well, how do we adopt the ordinance in its entirety without that piece of it? We have to amend that ordinance, right? The whole thing?
Yeah. I'm not sure if the planning commission will be able to make findings.
Right. And then we, we cannot open any other part of it up for discussion.
Hey, Michael, I have a question.
Commissioner Chichinsky, absolutely.
Uh, if we do that, what would the impact be of not having that parking piece in the ordinance? Would it then not have a parking element? And what is the, what is the legal implication of that? Maybe Mal can answer that.
Well, if that's Mal.
Yeah, this is, this is Mal. I think the ideal is to, um, send a fully baked ordinance to the council as opposed to trying to piecemeal it. If we try to piecemeal it, you know, there are certainly, um, some legal implications, not as significant as the practical implications, which are you're, you're going to give the council an ordinance, um, which they'll have to have two readings on. And then, uh, a second ordinance, which essentially amends that first ordinance, which again has two readings. That first ordinance really isn't, isn't going to be fully, um, um, able to be utilized until we have the second ordinance, uh, to, to change up the parking, uh, aspects of the first. So my recommendation, um, from kind of a, a practical legal perspective would be to figure it out at the planning commission level, um, and so we can forward one ordinance to the city council.
All right. Vice Chair Blackwell, I have a suggestion. I'm not sure if this solves everything that I think Commissioner Wu's brought up, but, uh, so let's say someone proposes, um, the least restrictive parking, right? So, let's say they're all proposing that it's all commercial, but that's going to change over time in that applicant's mind. So then, then maybe they would need a parking waiver, right? So, um, the way our parking waivers work, it can be approved at different levels, right? Staff level, uh, zoning administrator, planning commission. So in that case where they, that use of require, um, more parking, but they, it cannot be accommodated on site, then maybe because of the incentives that they're getting, that waiver would always require some type of approval by the planning commission. Does that address the issue or, and is there something that's missing there?
Well, that would certainly, um, that would certainly protect us, but, you know, when it comes to any sort of a code section, we want to be clear to somebody coming in new that doesn't understand the nuances of a, of development code. And if that, if we can draft some language that reads clearly that way, um, I think I'd be, I'd be happy with sending that forward per Mel's, um, recommendation. Otherwise, you know, I agree, you know, if we send in a piece, a big chunk of this would sound like a great idea, uh, but then we have this other component that makes it incomplete, that resolution, uh, in its entirety could not be considered by council and voted upon. Um, we'd have to amend it and just becomes a mess. So I'm, I'm a fan of bringing an exception back to, to commission for consideration. You know, I think that would be a reasonable approach to it. Uh, Commissioner Crandall?
Uh, yeah, I just want to, um, you know, we're talking waivers again. That doesn't help the guy when he's doing his, uh, financial review of a piece of property and seeing if it's worth buying and doing a project like this because that's an unknown to him if he's going to get the, uh, the waivers or not. So I still think we need a foundation that, um, says, uh, you're going to need X number of parking spaces to do your project. If you can provide them, you get your project. Otherwise, uh, I don't think we've solved the problem. So I, I unfortunately think it needs to go back for more, um, review and even if, even if we have a parking thing that is not as lenient as what is here tonight, uh, we can go in and complete this, send it to, um, city council on an extra view. And then should we choose down the line to grant, um, some leniency on what we're requiring? That's a possibility. That means that the investors and builders are protected. They've got a project that's viable and, um, if they say, hey, we can do this, this and this, can we lose one space? That's negotiable, not the other way. I don't think we can go in and say, um, well, you can do this project maybe if you can get planning commission approval, uh, because, um, the parking's so low. So that's my thought. I think it needs to go back and come up and, uh, unfortunately, I think that's the reality of the situation. And I'm sorry I didn't catch this earlier.
This is, this is a thing, um, I think, uh, if we don't have this non-residential parking, then the existing parking requirement would apply. So it really isn't a missing piece. It's essentially we're saying we're not providing parking incentive, but we can come back to amend it. Now, another idea, I think, is to make it clear, um, to give people a, a clear understanding of a parking incentive what we want to give them. That is, um, we can, we can calculate the parking requirement as, as normal, then give them a, a 20%. For example, if we give them 20% of a parking, uh, residential density bonus, we can do a similar thing. We say, you calculate your parking demand per our existing parking demand. That's our baseline. Now, based on that, we'll give you 20% of discount. You would be fine. So that's another way to look at it. So people know exactly what we get, what they get.
Yeah, but that means that an applicant's going to have to design his project twice.
What's that?
That would mean an applicant would have to design his project twice. Comes in once with the required part and then we give him a, a leniency on parking, then he has to go back and redesign it to take that into consideration.
No, no, no. If he designed a parking, uh, if, if an applicant had designed a structure with X amount of residential units and a Y amount of commercial space, he will calculate the parking demand from that floor spaces. Based on that, he got a Z number of parking requirement if it were not, has, has nothing to do with lot consolidation. Based on that, he got a Z number of parking requirement, if it were not, has nothing to do with lot consolidation. Then we multiply that number by 75%, that's a parking requirement. That's a parking requirement for this particular project because he's doing, or she is doing a lot of consolidation. We're giving them 20% of reduction. So he doesn't need to design it twice.
With no discretionary review? On that part?
On the parking count, no discretionary review. Of course, the architect needs discretionary review.
So what if we do, I think maybe this is part of what Commissioner Wu said, is you know, if we decide to not move forward with non-residential parking standards in this section, and we do something similar to what we already have in our parking code for mixed-use development, which is the sum of the requirements for each individual use, right? So it would default to the, you know, our different commercial standards for parking, but we adopt the residential parking as listed here in the code that Kyle has prepared. So it's just the non-residential that would default back to the municipal code. And that's an existing standard that we have already in the code. But then, I'd also like some feedback from Kyle on that, since I know you've prepared this, Kyle.
Kyle?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm sorry, I was just thinking, getting my words together. So I think, I guess I wouldn't normally be this blunt, but considering we've gone through two study sessions and the housing element is, we wanted to be updated with this, I would suggest Gabriel's recommendation to strike the incentive for non-residential parking reduction in ratio for non-residential parking, keep the residential parking incentive as it is, and just go on from there. If we want to add something later, maybe a reduction in parking could be granted with planning commission and approval, something general later on, then we could do that. Removing the non-residential parking incentive doesn't kill the entire intent of the ordinance. It does take out an important incentive, but it's not, it doesn't sit on the the intent of what the ordinance is supposed to do. So that's what I would, I think that'd be nice to see that happen.
Okay, Kyle, so are you suggesting that we go dive into this resolution here and remove a particular section and modify or add another section? If so, let's start that conversation.
Are you just suggesting removing non-residential parking incentives and that's it, right?
That's what I'm proposing.
And I could support that. That sounds like a great idea.
Vice Chair Blackwell, and something I'd recommend if the commission was willing to do that is what we could do, you know how we're doing these batch code amendments that you considered some recently, the last, the last planning commission meeting? So we are going to have a second part to that, and maybe the second part to that, you know, planning commission recommends that staff comes up to, up with some parking incentives for non-residential parking as part of this lot consolidation ordinance. That likely will come back sometime, I'm thinking probably about like springtime of 2021. And maybe that may be the best way to handle actually having some parking reduction provisions for non-residential parking.
Okay. So while you're talking, I was looking, catchman A, are we looking at AI, section AI? That removing that entire piece?
It's AI 2, right?
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at section G.2.8.2.
Okay.
G is incentive.
So under incentives. Okay, yes, I'm clear on that, Commissioner Wu, but I, it also affects section 2, under affordable density bonus incentives, and it, there's a discussion on residential parking and non-residential parking. So that would be affected by this as well, would it not?
Well, we're referring to this paragraph, this paragraph, this paragraph is section G.2.8.2.
Okay.
I think you might be referring to the, maybe the same sections, right?
Yeah, A2, right. G point. A, okay, G.2.8.2, I see what you're saying, yes, okay. Thank you for the clarification. So we're going to completely remove that section. And if we do, and the question comes up, what do we do in, you know, residential versus non-residential situations? And if we're silent on that, that can be, it just seems deficient now. The way it was written addresses it. Can't we find a way to add a piece in here that gives us the opportunity to visit any deviation? Commissioner Chinskey, you know, you're on board with completely removing it, but if we do that,
and this is just an incentive.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we're holding off that incentive for now, that's all.
And Vice Chair Blackwell, if you're looking for some reassurance for the applicant, what do you do in that case for non-residential parking? Maybe it makes sense under G.2A in that paragraph, adding a sentence that identifies non-residential parking is subject to
Yeah.
off-street parking standards for non-residential uses.
That would be good, because then we're not completely silent on it. It's addressed, and I think that's better than having nothing at all, in my opinion. Any other commissioners want to chime in on that? Mr. Wu?
I'm good on that.
Okay, so let's, so what we're talking about here is removing A.2, but adding a sentence to Gabriel's point that there would be some attention given to that exception. So Gabriel, why don't you, or Kyle, one of you guys, why don't you come up with some, something good to add there? And we'll go ahead and go around, and if there are no other comments on any other sections here, why don't we start thinking about a vote on this, and we can amend that piece of it, and go ahead and vote that way. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I can make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance. Excuse me. Number TC 20-018, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, recommending the city council approve and adopt an ordinance amending Title 17, zoning amendment 20-258 of the municipal code to include provisions encouraging development and regulating the consolidation of adjacent standard and substandard laws with the condition that for section G.2.8.2, non-residential parking, it now reads, "Non-residential parking is subject to existing parking standards in zoning code." Then also, on section H, required finding, item 3, the bottom the line next to the last one, or above that, add a word substantially to be in front of the word reduce. So the last sentence would read, or the item 3 would read, "In granting an increase in building height, a reduction in required building setbacks and/or increasing the amount of lot coverage that decision-making authority shall find that such increase in or decrease will not result in any adverse impacts to adjacent properties due to inclusionment of a building element that would substantially reduce such property's access to light and air, the privacy enjoyed by the adjacent residents, or otherwise reduce the reasonable use of the property."
Okay, thank you for that. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Let me add one more thing. And with the recommendation that the staff comes up with some parking incentive or relief for non-residential parking requirement for future discussion.
Okay, we did discuss that as a group here, as an idea, and so I, I'm okay with that piece of it. Anybody else have any challenge with that last part? Okay, I have a motion. Do I still have a second? Commissioner Chinskey?
I don't think you need a second, right? That was just a recommendation.
Well, we're sending it forward, this is a recommendation to council, so we're sending the whole thing.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion, a second. Why don't we go around the table? Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
How do you vote? Aye? Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Chinskey?
Aye.
And Commissioner Blackwell has an aye, it passes. Let's see, we got,
Right.
We got five with one recused. Motion passes. Thank you. I am going to go ahead and hand the gavel back to Commissioner Rulon, who is on standby, and Commissioner Rulon, if you're there, I hand it over to you.
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you.
So that is the end of item 8. Item 9 is new business. We do have one piece of new business, the planning commission draft work plan, and Gabriel is going to be taking us through this. So the floor is yours, Gabriel.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the planning commission, Gabriel Presley, planner. And we have a short PowerPoint along with, for this presentation. Okay. All right, so the city council approved amendments to the San Clemente municipal code that require the planning commission to submit a work plan by October. And so a lot of the other committees and commissions also have that same directive. Next slide. And so today's staff has prepared a work plan as a basis for the discussion today for your consideration, so that that can be presented to the city council at one of their future meetings. Next slide, please. So one of the things I did was just go back to the municipal code. We haven't done this before, and so you know, there is a template that the city clerk's office did prepare for the commissions and committees to follow, and that's why you see the attachment organized the way that it is. But I did look back at the municipal code with respect to the planning commission functions, and what I bullet pointed here were the functions that the planning commission has, which is holding the regular meetings like you have tonight, and have public hearings to act on applications as required by Title 17. And then you make recommendations to the city council on certain applications, like tentative maps, general plan amendments, specific plan amendments, and zoning amendments. But there are applications where the planning commission is the final decision-making authority, and and so those aren't a recommendation that goes on to the city council that stops with the planning commission. The third point is the planning commission serves as the transportation and parking committee, also serves as the cultural heritage board, and lastly, serves as the design review subcommittee. So considering all that, that could be helpful in putting together a work plan for city council consideration. Next slide, please. So this is kind of a template that we were given to work with, so all the commissions and committees have their work plans prepared in a similar format, so it's organized according to a project name. We don't necessarily have necessarily a project name, but kind of doing the best we can with this template. So one of the things that the planning commission does for the city is conduct development review. And so under the purpose, goals, and deliverables here, you know, I basically identify what the planning commission does, which is reviewing all the applications all the way from site, plan permits, all the way down to discretionary site permits, right? And so with those permits, you know, planning commission is the final decision-making authority, and then obviously the planning commission making recommendations to council on those items already mentioned, like general plan amendments and specific plan amendments. But I also mentioned examples of projects that we do know that the planning commission will be reviewing this year, or maybe have reviewed recently. So examples of projects include the lodge rooftop venue, so that's the hotel at the San Clemente outlets, Shoreline Dental, so DRC is already reviewing that for the design of that project on El Comune Real. Bluff Sat Boca, which the planning commission hasn't seen yet, it's a recently submitted application. Laguayet, the expansion that the planning commission has reviewed. Public House, which is an event center proposed in the North Beach area. And the planning commission last meeting reviewed the in-and-out proposal. But also the Mayor Mart Event Center, they are going to DRC soon for some MITER modifications to their design. And then another project, Mikey B's mixed-use project, right? So those are the projects that we know of right now, but there are going to be more projects, you know, as we receive applications. So that's all current planning. Then the other part is long-range projects that the planning commission would review. So you recently reviewed code cleanup amendments recently, so that was where we looked at everything from our non-conforming regulations, and we made some amendments there, as well as provisions for like taprooms. So, and then there's going to be a second part to that in the spring, that the planning commission is going to review. Lock consolidation ordinance, which you reviewed tonight and made a recommendation. But also our inclusionary housing in Lufy, which is being studied right now, so I kind of packaged that for a planning commission, you know, obviously to discuss today, and you know, if there's anything that you'd like to add to that. But these are really application-based or based on initiatives initiated by the city council, right, like code amendments. Here, there's not really an estimated project cost, because it's, you know, we we already budget for these planning commission meetings, and you know, a lot of that's, you know, staff time and preparation of the staff reports, it's already budgeted. So no new costs there. There's not really a timeline, because we have your regular planning commission meetings. There's not really a timeline because we have your regular planning commission meetings. So no additional resources beyond what we are already assumed already for these meetings. And let's see. So any questions here on development review by the planning commission? And also if you have any recommendations, things to add so that the city council can review as well?
Do you envision any specific plans becoming reviewed this year at all? Marblehead Island or Talega or Forests Ranch? The rest of those all got to be in conformance with the general plan from six years ago sometime.
Yeah.
Have any of that on their plate or where are we at there?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Brown. Yeah, we were planning to do the West Pico Corridor specific plan update this fiscal year. And so some of the challenges to that is having to move two of the long-range planners, which includes Kyle and Chris Wright, to assist more with current planning. We did lose Jonathan Lightcliff to the city manager's office. So really, he's just finishing off current planning projects that he was finishing up right before he left. And then Aaron Guy, if you remember Aaron Guy, he was our community development technician. So there's a need for some of our long-range planners to assist with our current planning applications. So that was one of the things that we recommended to put off until 2021. So we don't know if we'll be able to commence work before the end of this fiscal year. So we were thinking that we would do that the next fiscal year. It's all going to depend on if we'll have those resources to start it earlier. Commissioner Brown, I think you're speaking, but you're on mute.
Are you, have you been dealing with a hiring freeze or are you getting any relief from that for some of these project requirements? You're on mute.
Sorry, I could barely hear you when you were talking. Sorry. Do that again.
Yeah, I mean, are you, because you're short personnel, are you still under the umbrella of the hiring freeze or are you getting any relief from that?
No, there isn't any relief from that. So, you know, I don't think that would change the next budget cycle for the city.
Okay, thank you. You know, Gabriel, you know, one thing about looking at these, I know this is one of three slides that we're covering. And it looks like a lot of work for the planning commission. But it's always good to see this and know that there's staff behind all this as the research arm and doing so much of the work that's presented to us. And this is only part of staff's responsibilities, the planning staff's responsibilities. So it's good, you know, for us to see, I think, the amount of work that you're doing and the kind of resources that you have available. One recommendation that occurred to me was, based on what something Don said, we might want to put an asterisk or, you know, put it a little different color, the projects that are being done to bring us in conformance with the general plan. Because as Don said, we're whatever, six years from our original approval of the general plan and nobody expects us to be conformant overnight. But it's been a while now and there's, you know, it might be good to see, you know, gee, there's these projects you're working on that are maybe worthwhile, but what do they have to do with the general plan or fulfilling the general plan for the city? So that's a recommendation I would have, not necessarily a change in this, but start to get a sense of, you know, what's going to bring us in conformance with the general plan versus what's not. And that might affect the priority of it. In this area too, we talked about this the other day a little bit. Some years ago, I don't know, three years ago, the city council did, maybe more than three years ago, maybe four, they did give us a direction, give the planning commission and the planning department a direction to work on our dark skies ordinances, which is something that brings us in conformance with the general plan. And we spent time, we kind of got halfway there. We've done a good amount of research and we're ready to start writing the ordinance. But then that shut down because of a loss of staff, serious loss of staff and such. I, it's obvious you guys have a full plate. And so we should be very careful about, you know, throwing something else on. But it is a direct, it was a directive from city council. And I know there's been different people on the council now, so there might be a different feeling about it. But also, you know, it's something to bring us in conformance with the general plan. So what do you think about adding this or at least bringing it up to council as something that might be worthwhile for us to do? When we had done this before, we created a subcommittee of the planning commission to, you know, work on this with staff and come up with a proposed ordinance. I'm sorry, Gabriel, you're on mute.
Yeah. Well, you know, this is really up to the planning commission. So even though I'm mentioning that, you know, there are some constraints that we have, you know, there isn't, you know, if there's something that the planning commission wants to see accomplished or even started, you know, the planning commission does recommend that. Or maybe there's a category for this, right? I don't know what we call it, like has, maybe has resources available that, you know, we're working on the dark skies ordinance and the West Pico Corridor specific plan update. So we could, you know, this is definitely open to the planning commissions to put up there, you know. I would just hate, you know, at the end of the, well, in the fall, typically there's like a joint committee and commissions meeting where we kind of report on the successes, right, of what the commission did for the year. So on, you know, that, those two might be some of the items that we just don't complete, right? So just kind of keep that in mind. So, you know, I have no reservations of putting anything that the planning commission wants to put in here before the city council. It's just that, you know, I can't guarantee they'll all be accomplished, so.
Yeah, let me ask a question this way. If we were, and I think I know the answer to this, but are you, you know, for all these three slides and the things we have listed on them, is the planning staff 100% committed? In other words, these are all things either that we know are coming in and big, big sort of projects or directives from city council, although this was a directive at one time from city council too. But given all this on your plate, does this take up at least 100% of your time and resources to do by the end of the fiscal year? Is that, would that be a fair assessment?
Yeah, I would say so. And I know a lot of the questions are about more of our long-range activities. So I do have a slide that shows everything we plan to work on with long-range planning. And, you know, the planning commission would like to see that. I can share that with you and that gives you an idea of what we plan to accomplish, right? Because there's other things, right? Like just regular reporting that we do to the state on like our consistency with our housing element and how we're doing with our arena numbers. So I have that available if the planning commission would like to see that. And that doesn't include, and that's not all listed in this work plan. So if you'd like to see that, I have that available.
It may not be a bad idea to see it, but I, here's where I'm struggling, I think, with these plans. You've got a lot of standing things, work you need to do. You've got a lot of directives from city council, clearly more than, you know, you can do because there are things that aren't on here that has been directed. Is, you know, we've got these plans. I sort of understand that the value of them to a certain extent. But you're kind of full up with council directives. So is there anything that we could reasonably add to this? For instance, or anything we could reasonably remove from it that the commission could do that? I don't know that there is because these are all council directives. We could re-list.
They add it, but council directives in there. I don't think some of the council directives are.
Well, that's kind of what, that's kind of what I said is these are all council directives and probably not all of them, right? Because like the dark skies stuff isn't in here. That's a council directive from a few years ago. So I'm wondering if what we need to do is say, well, these are all the things that we've got. This fills up our plate. And then there's other things that we should be doing or that we want to be doing. But staff doesn't have the resources. So any other council directives, for instance, that aren't on these, you know, the West Pico Corridor specific plan, the, you know, I don't, you know, we haven't gotten to this slide yet, but, you know, the update to the design review guideline, stuff like that. So in other words, there's kind of two things. There's a standard sort of format that council has asked the committees and commissions to present. And this is kind of filled up. I think Gabriel's done a good job of filling up these buckets and showing us that the buckets are pretty full. But maybe we want one more slide for council saying, and these are things we think we should, that need to be worked on or that you have said to work on, but we don't have really the planning resources for them.
Yeah, Chairman, I think we could accommodate that and present that to the city council. The planning commission would like to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I kind of like that just because I really hesitate to kind of throw more on the, like, we can't direct you. We can say, we want you to do X, Y, and Z, but it's up to council to direct you. But kind of that extra slide where we put on, say, again, we can't load it up too much, but, you know, these three things or these six things maybe at most that we think are important to do, but we don't have the resources for them. And if we could agree on those, then we've got the things that Gabriel's put together plus those items that we think aren't on there, but are still important.
Yeah, yeah. Hey Jim, if I may, comment on that as well. When you're able to give me the nod, I'm going to go ahead and chime in.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm with you on that. I can just, I can say from my perspective, over the years, I've watched things come and go. I've watched cans be, you know, kicked and kicked by different groups. And, you know, things just don't get addressed for one reason or another. And it's almost always to do with capacity, you know. Staff has an upper limit and there's only so much we can do. So we've always prioritized these things, the things we have to do, either state or federal mandates we've got. We've got to meet certain requirements, our LCP, all general plan amendments that we've done over the years. These are all, you know, these are all rule-driven, if you will. And then we've got some things that have been thrown out by members of council over the years that have become sort of a, you know, an ongoing directive that staff, you know, is tasked with that sometimes is just overwhelming. I mean, it's easy to say, but not always easy to do. And when you're a planner, you know, you hear a concept like, you know, revisiting a housing element. It's easy to say, yeah, we have a housing issue, but it's an almost impossible task to achieve effectively because of the moving target that we now know is, you know, happening in Sacramento. So looking at what Gabriel has on this list, I see a snapshot in time. And I like your idea about adding an amendment, but it's also, you know, what is the desire of the council today versus what the desire is going to be tomorrow and what it was yesterday? And what our needs are with our general plan? I think that's one way to prioritize it. We can always add a list. This is a work plan that we've been asked for, aside from our duties as commissioners to review projects. You know, we're also doing these sidebar tasks with, you know, code amendments and think tanking and all these things that we do. So why don't we just call it a think tank thing? We go down maybe a couple of commissioners or commissioners can each throw out a couple of things, ideas that we can put on that secondary list. Like, for example, our wireless element ordinance. It's grossly outdated behind the times. We have a wireless, a wireless plan that we refer to as some golden rule that's completely outdated, does not serve the city well. It's, in my opinion, for the most part ineffective. And I mean, there's some good, you know, logic there, but it's ineffective. You know, we've got, council last night was talking about, you know, the T-zone and how we can accommodate and down on Victoria and how we can widen and accommodate the, you know, you know, the businesses permanently there and serve food. That's another thing I think that would really deserve, all could be tied back to the general plan. Those are two really important things that we could add to this secondary list. It's our work plan. And the council can say, well, hey, we like this. We don't like that other stuff anymore that's on the primary list. We want to replace it with, you know, addressing our visitor-serving areas again and maybe revisiting a redesign of Del Mar perhaps. I mean, one-way traffic only or pedestrian, you know, foot traffic only or whatever the case may be, prioritize it that way. So I'm on board with that idea completely, Jim, so.
Well, maybe, maybe something to do is, I'm sure every commissioner's got, you know, some things in mind that they, that they want to see done. Maybe what we could do is have each commissioner kind of give their top two items and hopefully, but there'll be some overlap between them. And that means in the end, we'll have a maximum of 12 items. And then we cut that down and vote on six items. We prioritize six items and say, these are the things that we might want to tell council that we would like to do in addition to what we've got, what Gabriel has listed here.
Yeah. Gabriel's put what he thinks his staff can handle. So how can we load any more on top of it than it is?
Well, this is.
Whereas a master plan belongs to engineering and public works, I don't think planning even have to lead on it.
Well, to answer your question, I'm not saying that we're adding it. I don't think we can add it. I agree with you. This, I think they have a full plate. But it's kind of bringing the council's attention that there are important things that we don't have the bandwidth to do. And if we have the bandwidth to do it, you know, we should be doing it. And maybe they should be on next year's priority, at least if they're not on this year's priority. The other thing to do is just to kind of say, okay, that this is what it is. And that's what it is. That's what we can do in the next year. And, you know, we vote for it and we, you know, go home. That's, you know, seems like that would be the other thing to do. My idea is just more of a communication to city council so that they understand sort of what we think. You know, all this is stuff that needs to be done. We can't, I don't, I don't know that we can really remove any of this stuff. So, you know, all that's left is for us to make recommendations of, you know, gee, it'd be good to, if you had more planning staff so we could do this other stuff.
I want to have a small comment, if I may.
Yeah, and Chris.
So Gabriel, from what I understand, the council is just looking for a one-year work plan, right? Something that we're going to commit to and do. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And thank you for doing this. This is a great list of things. My only comment is, you know, when council receives this, they may want to see categorically what we're doing for the next year. And just breaking it out a little bit more from, you lumped everything into development review, but there's so much more that the next year is going to bring to us. For instance, the specific projects, maybe in one category. And I'm just talking about a separate paragraph. I'm not talking about a completely new box or anything like that. But just in paragraphs, projects, specific, you know, amendments to the general plan and specific plan, the work we do on the ordinances. Just kind of break out the general categories so that when somebody in, at the council looks at this, they have an idea of the blocks that we're responsible for. But I think we should stick with what the council's asking us to do. And that's just what we're willing to commit to for 2020, 2021.
Yeah, Commissioner Kaczynski, if I could speak to that. So that is a good point. You know, I did lump a lot under development review, but you could see under, you know, in this second category of purpose, goals, and deliverables, the last sentence is really not development review, right? Like projects that we're reviewing from the public. They're more long-range projects, quality of life ordinances, things like that. So, you know, maybe we just group those in a separate category, right? A separate slide. And that's like long-range planning items, something like that. That would be easy to do, right? I would just take that out and just create that new category. Something to think about.
It includes something with, yeah. And the separate paragraphs would help out also because looking at that is just a lot of words that are thrown at you. But great job. Thank you.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes, the chair and vice chair. And you brought it.
Yes, the chair and vice chair, and you, you brought up a very good point to be a little more proactive as a planning commission. The commission doesn't make our own agenda. We take order from city council. Some item are initiated by staff. And then we take projects when they come through the pipeline. So that leaves us some, something to be desired. So it would be nice if planning commission has some, some liberty, however, however limited, to, to be able to make some initiative, agenda item, and then make the recommendations to the city council. I served on coastal advisory committee for one year and they can, they can discuss and put some stuff on, on their agenda. Commissioning, planning commission is, as of now, is just take the order and, and deal with the, the task coming in front of us. So I would agree that it's probably not in code right now, but it would be better if planning commission has some discretion, some liberty, however small that is, to be able to initiate something that will accommodate what we believe that's important to the city. Because we, we're, we're more familiar with the, with the, being the city council on a lot of planning issues in the city. And we had closer, we're closer to those issues. So if we are allowed to make some recommendations and make some policy initiative, just a recommendation, right? So the city council will look at them and say, yeah, this makes sense. Why don't you guys, why don't, why don't the staff study it and, and present it in front of the commission for conservation? Or they, they can ignore some of the recommendation, but at least allow us to, to do that, you know, once a year, twice a year, or, or every season.
Commissioner Crandall, did you have something you wanted?
Yeah, I have a couple of items. Right now we have the authority to recommend to city council things, Jen, that we, we have to ask for their approval to direct staff to do anything. So we can do that. We haven't, but we certainly can. I want to take a little different tact. We're kind of in an interesting situation where this June, every one of our seats is going to be up for reappointment or change. And I'd like to see it here as one of the functions that has to be done by staff and the commission is to make sure that all planning commissioners have had training in the relationships between the vision statement, general plan, our ordinances, similar to what leadership San Clemente does. And make sure commissioners are getting training because depending on how the appointments go, our body could be pretty dysfunctional if we get new members who don't know historic preservation ordinances and how that's done. So I think Gabriel, if you can put something in here that says there will be continuing training and say, even the existing members here, I'm sure all of us can use refreshers. You've got a webinar tomorrow, I think, on historic items that would probably be good for other councilmen or commissioners to see. But I mean, we've got to have the current on what is the responsibility of the planning commission? What are the responsibilities of the design review subcommittee? Historic preservation, training in SEQA? And depending on what happens in June, it should be, and I think this work plan, that there may be a lot of work for staff and existing members to be member, who get reappointed to be mentors, to bring all the planning commissioners up to speed. And that takes a lot of time, effort, but it's a responsibility we all take. And I think we've got to make sure that's part of our work plan for the coming year.
I think that's, that's a really excellent point. I agree completely. I really think that needs to be added in there because as you say, we have a risk. We don't have any idea what the makeup is going to be of the planning commission. So, yeah, I'm a hundred percent behind that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm on board with that as well. I think that's basic, really. Like any other job, there should be some minimal level of qualification. So thank you for that, Mr. Crandall. It's about time.
And it will also bring it to the attention of the city council on what they need to consider when they make appointments.
Absolutely.
Commissions are faced with that, so it's, but we're more critical in many ways.
Yeah.
That's, that's excellent suggestion. I'm sure the next council will have that continuity in mind when they make some of the appointments.
I hope so. Let's hope so. Commissioner Rule, in, in that case, if we could also consider that when staff presents a work plan, it's like, you know, one would do going to the, to their CFO at a company and asking for some more money to, you know, launch or supplement an ongoing project. You know, a staff is going to present a work plan, whether they're at max capacity or not, if there are critical items such as the revisiting of procedural matters relative to commissions and committees, whether it's the wireless master plan, which again, I believe is completely inefficient, not serving us well, visitor serving areas, whatever those issues are, if they're, and I believe, you know, last night's meeting was very telling. Council had a lot of discussion on expansion of the restaurant uses permanently outdoors. And so that seems like it's a timely and time-sensitive and important component now, right now especially. So these are things that could be presented and the, you know, the urgency of each item or the importance of each item could be considered by council and perhaps things are removed and replaced. Or staff is presented with, you know, extra budget, you know, more, more labor force in there, you know? Maybe another planner can be added. But that's why this, these are the things that have to happen in order for staff to get some sort of relief to address important things. The work plan is, is effective in that. And we're a land use body. So I think they, our council relies on us heavily, not just the planning department, but on us too as a planning commission, because, you know, we see things and are considering things and are watching trends and, and visiting other cities and seeing what's happening. These are things that we're bringing in. And I believe our recommendation would probably carry some value at council within our work plan, even if it's a, you know, an auxiliary list of items, those items could be considered and perhaps added to the list and staff could get relief as, 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 as part of this. So I think it's all important. So those two items each planner ha, each commissioner has, are we still going to go around the table and ask each commissioner?
I, I don't know, I don't know if there's an interest in it. I threw that out for, for kind of the reason that you were talking about. It sounds like there's a lot of consensus on what Bart brought up, adding in there that the kind of, you know, training, because, you know, well, we should have training anyway, but also training because of the risk of the potential change in the makeup, if there's a significant change in the makeup for the planning commission. I think everybody is, is behind that one. I don't know if, Ben, if everything that has been presented here, and I guess I haven't let Gabriel present everything because I know he's got two other slides covering two other areas of things that we can cover. And I want to let him do that too, if he feels, if he feels the need.
Commissioner Rule?
Yes, Tom.
Yeah, I just, to put this in perspective, this is the first year this new ordinance has even required this type of a work plan. So this all came about actually with the new ordinance they in fact suspended, and I'm not going to put it in effect till next July, this work plan. So we're trying to, we're trying to work on something here that came with the new ordinance that got, you know, kind of pushed out. And so there's, I don't think there's any, there's no hooks in it for budgetary requirement. We probably bring some of the, to the council to read, okay, everybody's under resource, but everybody knows that. So I don't think the hooks are there yet. This is the first year this has been put in place. And it's been put in place with the ordinance that got deferred for a year. And so we're, I think the staff is scrambling with it and we're scrambling with it. It would have been good to have a study session on this before we got it into the formal agenda tonight, but I think, Gabriel, is there a due date? I noticed all the other committees and commissions have pushed most of theirs through. They're up, they've been up to council to approve them. In fact, there were several, I think, last night. So are we the last, the caboose on the train here? Is there some, I mean, there's no, gee, there's no fiscal hooks to it. So we're all kind of scrambling here with this new concept. An ordinance that really isn't in place. That's the only form I'm trying to make.
Yeah, you know, this is really, in the code, it says, it's supposed to be due October 1st, it's October 7th. So we are late and kind of explain why, why we're late. You know, originally, when we were talking about the work plans for the committees and commissions, we were unsure if it really made sense for the planning commission to have a work plan because, you know, a lot of what the planning commission does, it's, you know, as mentioned before, is responding to applications that come before the planning commission. And, you know, I talk about some of that here, but there are obviously some other items that, you know, some of you initiate yourselves, right? Maybe it might be study session topics, among other things. So, so after that discussion and we kind of came to the conclusion that, that the planning commission should be preparing a work plan. So, so we lost some time there, right? But there's no issue. I think the expectation is that we'll still go to the city council. And I think it would, I think it might be going to city council if, you know, approved tonight.
21st to 20th is the next meeting day, right?
Yeah, so it would be for, for the 20th.
Well, you know, I do think it's a good exercise for us to communicate to city council the priorities that, that, you know, that the planning commission thinks that there are. Just in the discussion we've had here though, I don't know if we're quite prepared to do that. And, you know, this is late. We need to, you know, we do need to push it out the door. It is, it is version one, you know? This is our first time doing it, so we'll see some bugs and see some things that we, that we think could be approved. Let me just put this out as a potential idea. We could approve this as it stands with the addition that Bart talked about with the training and the mentoring. But then maybe we can have a study session in the not-too-distant future where, where we just have a discussion about what we think our priorities should be. You know, the, the top six things, you know, I mean, obviously the regular stuff that we do, but the top six things we think we need to do is the dark sky ordinance, is it the wireless ordinance? And, and do that in the form of a study session. Probably should, probably, that's probably how we should have approached this, but it's our first time out of the gate. But then we'll have that and we can then have a vote to forward that, if we want to, to forward that to the city council saying, hey, here's, here's what we've observed. We just wanted to communicate this to you that we think that these are important priorities. That's another, that's another idea. So that would kind of get this sort of out of our space. And if we wanted to, we could still sit down and have a conversation about what we think some long-term priorities for us might be.
Commissioner Rule, can I start briefly on that?
Please, Tom.
Yeah, I, I agree with you in many ways on this, Jim, that we need, you know, this is late. The staff is late. The other committees and commissions already pushed theirs through. There's always been a, what we're dealing with here is there's a portion of the planning commission is always in a react mode. That's what is kind of laid out here in some way. In other words, we react to whatever applications come in the door. And those are some of those laid out there. Then there's other things that we should be more proactive, always frustrated me in the 10 years I've been with the commission, we, we and the staff have never had a session where in the planning area of planning, we never, we lay out what we ought to try to do with stretch goals or make, oops, we didn't make it for the next year. And those are, you know, the specific plans and the, and the, and the ordinances and that, like you said, dark sky started with, with the general plan advisory committee in 2008 or 2009. We're 10 or 11 years into that. You're the originator of the whole chapter from looking at it. And so there's the planning part of it, which is your long-range planning section, Gabriel, that we should interact with. Okay, this year we're going to try to do this. You know, the Marblehead Plan, Coast Inland, or the Talega specific plan, or the Pico Plan, we're going to try to get that done. There's never been an interaction from the long-range stuff we should be doing, this ordinance or this plan. And the other part of the thing is the react mode, which, what comes in the door. And so that's where I think we don't have much choice but to kind of look through this, put Bart's thing in here and push it to council, but to make it a meaningful document going forward for next year, because it's going to be in the ordinance next year and we're going to have to live with it. And Gabriel, you're, you're going to have to live with it. We should, we should plan to and maybe somehow budget to it. There's a sit-down and really lay out, like Jim said, what's the top two staff and commission, which ordinance, you know, which long-range affect that we really are going to have it, issues that are really are important to City San Clemente or third charter. Some of the stuff that's in there is kind of fluff and what we really need to get our hands around it, which is the big stuff. And that's my piece enough.
Commissioner Rule, did you, what's up with that?
Oh, yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with everybody. Commissioner Braun summarized it very well. Again, it's like Commissioner Barr, Crandall said it, and I said it, we'd like to have some, some room to make some initiative or make some recommendation to, to recommend to the city council what is really important for the commission to take on in the next self-muchness as a body. So instead of taking orders every time. And Commissioner, Vice Chair Crandall talked about the current need of the community to figure out some way to, to help the downtown business, for example. Planning commission was not consulted. We are willing to help and we have, we have some expertise, we have some skills to offer. I like our economic development officer, he worked in planning department, he was excellent, but we, we have, we have something to offer to help. So I think those are the initiatives that somehow the planning commission could be involved. Otherwise, it's, it's, it's not a work plan. It's whatever company comes towards us and we react to it, right? So we don't need to make a work plan here and the staff makes the plan. And the, the chair is the one who presented it to the council, I believe. So it needs to go through that little, a study session and a, and discussion process so the commission can have some consensus on what to pursue.
So in the interest of moving this forward, how do people feel about adding Bart's observation that we should include training and mentoring, particularly for what might be a new planning commission, a very different planning commission next year? We, you know, vote to, you know, approve this and send it to the city council. And then have a, a study session at the date TBD where we discuss what we think our priorities should be for strategic objectives. How do people feel about that?
I could agree with Bart's input.
I support it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with it as well.
Okay.
I was on board.
So Gabriel, do you have enough to add? I don't, I don't know if this is like a, it's not like an ordinance or something like that. Do you have enough to add from us to add what Bart asked for? Or Bart, is there any specific text you want added?
I, you know, Chairman, I, I think I have that. I know Commissioner Crandall asked about, or requested training for, for planning commissioners regarding the relationships between maybe foundational documents and roles of the planning commission, like general plan, responsibilities like historic preservation, you know, sequoia determination. So I could, I could easily add that to the work plan. So I could, I could easily add that to the work plan, unless there's some specific language you want to make sure I include. But I think I understand.
Yeah, I'm good with that. These are just recommendations and things can change in the future on it. So that's, just bringing it to light is what's important.
Chairman Rulon, would you like me to go to the rest of the slides then and then just conclude from there?
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you.
Okay. So let me move on to the, the next slide. Next slide, please. Okay. So the, the next, I guess, project name would be, which isn't really a project, this is what, what the planning commission is. It's the Cultural Heritage Board. But under this, you know, I mentioned that, that planning commission would be making recommendations to council or have made recommendations regarding North Beach Historic District nomination, which you've done, both as planning commission and DRC. You will be, the, the, the other activities include the historic property preservation agreements, which were, there'll be a few being presented to DRC very soon in the fall. And then under this are also just responsibilities that I just listed. I think it's always good to make sure that the city council understands what your responsibilities are as a cultural heritage board. And, and kind of same thing, this is something that you do that's ongoing throughout the year. You do this through your regular scheduled meetings. And then for a timeline, I just mentioned that the North Beach Historic District nomination is expected to conclude by December. And then the historic preservation agreements, recommendations will occur in the fall. So anything else regarding historic preservation that you think I may have missed or overlooked?
I have a bit of a general comment on, on all of the slides. Under resource needed, including staff hours, you put none. And I, I don't think that's true. I think you guys put a lot of resources and staff hours into all this stuff. And I, I know you probably can't come up with an exact hour, but you, but you may want to put in some, some percentage here that, you know, this is going to take up, this slide will take up 50% of staff's time or 25% of staff's time, some general estimate, so that city council understands that, that this does take up, you know, you know, X chunk of your time.
Okay. Yeah, that's really good feedback. Thank, thank you.
Don, don, do you have something you want to add?
Hey, tell them none, they're going to give you none.
Chris?
It's an excellent, really make us a useful document. I know we're, Gabriel, you're reacting and you're placed in form, you're doing all sorts of study sessions and zoning works, and this is laid on the thing, but that, and this is a staff, but you, to make it go useful going forward, I think Gabriel makes a very good point. And Larry Culbertson is going to take you to task on current list of buildings and historical sites and monuments, and I hope we, particularly the word current, because he's been, the last time we had it is historical inventory was like two thousand and eight. So some of the words in here, he's going to come back and he's going to, he's going to sandpaper you on, Gabriel, but just be, just be aware going forward.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Chris, something on this slide?
Yeah, Commissioner Rulon, you know, I, I actually like your, your suggestion there because I've often wondered how much time staff does take on specific code amendments or, or code amendments in general and the projects and how many hours they actually take. And I think this is an opportunity for staff to really highlight the number of hours or the percentage of time they spend on a specific type of project or specific area of their work. So I like your, I like your suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this slide? Okay, let's go to the next one, Gabriel.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so last slide is review of planning issues of importance to San Clemente. That's what I titled it, was the best title I could come up with. So if you have any other recommendations, please suggest it. So under this would be kind of what you do with regular study sessions where you evaluate those important issues. So identify examples of what those study sessions could be. And this is what I gleaned from planning commission, you know, the past few months. And some of these we've actually touched on already and will continue to study this year. So one is the commercial parking pickup stall issue that was raised and we're going to have another study session on that, continuing that discussion. The other I know Commissioner Wu had brought up was kind of evaluating development on South El Camino Real and the mixed-use zoning district developments standards and see if, if that's facilitating development. It also mentioned, you know, probably be a historic preservation training, you know, example could be tomorrow, but there'll be other trainings that will want the planning commission to participate in. So we don't know what those future trainings will be at this point. Zoning code cleanup amendments, I mentioned there's going to be a part two to that, which will likely be presented to planning commission sometime in the spring or early summertime. And then planning legislative updates. So you might remember, we just recently had a study session presented by BBNK on some of the recent legislation by the state. And then also the inclusionary housing in Lufy. So we had a study session recently on that and we're going to have another one before the end of the year.
I like parking in Lufy.
Yeah, if, if you want to add parking in Lufy or anything else.
To me, to me, a lot of the stuff you listen here are, if I was to call this project name important to San Clemente, study sessions are not important to San Clemente, they're important to the planning commission. You know, and I know you're late and we have to have this thing to council, but if I was to rework it to a study session for next year, I would really put a lot of meat on the bones of this thing, of things that really are important to the city of San Clemente. That's where your long-range planning group comes into play and with Jennifer. And so my initial impression is of her, I think she does an excellent job. Like I tried to make up the point before, our general plan was, that three of us worked on it through forty meetings, was approved six years ago now. And we've got a lot of stuff on the plate by law that were required to update. And we're, to me, we're flat late on it and that should be here because that's what's important, whether the city of San Clemente knows it or not, it should be important to you and to the rest of the commission. And so to me, this purpose goal of deliverable of the project is, you know, half the stuff we've already looked at, it's kind of fluff. And so I'm not very happy with it, but you know, you presented to us at the eleventh hour and fifty-ninth minute to make a due date to council. And to me, going forward, next year, let's put a lot of meat on the bone of this piece, this sheet to make it viable. And once again, put staff hours on it so you get budget.
Okay, thanks. Bart?
Yeah, I, I think you might just want to put one sentence under this and it may be something that's going to take up a lot of time next year is reviewing changes that may want to be made permanent or how to control them that were done to accommodate the coronavirus changes. Mainly the outdoor dining issues of do they stay or not, et cetera, et cetera, you know, and incorporating anything we need to do if, in fact, we think it's important to either keep them operating or saying they're, they're not something we want to see long-term. And just do a, a general thing that you will be reviewing those issues.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great suggestion that we can, we can add that.
Okay, any other comments on any of these slides? If not, Gabriel, do you need a motion from us or do you just have what you need?
Well, Chairman, maybe I could just recommend taking you through this last slide if you have any questions. Next slide.
I'm sorry, did you have one more slide?
Yeah.
I apologize.
You know, I know, I think this might have been a recommendation from you, Chairman Rulon, is get an idea of what we are actually working on as staff on the long-range side. So these are just a list of the items that we're working on. So gives you an idea of things that we're doing. So one, one of the things that I know, Chairman, you brought up was the dark sky ordinance. So it's not in our, our queue for this year. But I also think it's not important not to lose sight of it, right? We, it's still like on one of our lists that we know that we have to get to. But I, I just want to make sure that you, and I think it makes sense in the future for us to just do this on an annual basis, present, hey, this is staff's work plan for long-range items, just so that we can have interaction with, with the planning commission and you're, you understand what to expect for the year. So, so I can send this to you all individually as well, but this relates to just different things that we're doing throughout the year regarding housing. So we have the housing element, block consolidation ordinance, inlet fees, the local coastal program, implementation plan, sea level rise vulnerability assessment, coastal land use plan amendment regarding major remodels, batzoning updates, which you recently reviewed and made a recommendation to council. The leap lower ordinance, that dropped off this year after, you know, council didn't make a decision on it. Historic districts, that's already been presented to the planning commission. The parking studies, that, that was abandoned this summer because there's no real way to do that with COVID and all the, the, what do you call it, parklets that were installed. We just lost a lot of parking that we really can't assess in the summertime. Plus, the, the parking demand is probably very skewed, skewed anyway, considering what's happening with parking, I'm sorry, with, with COVID. So we, we are suggesting that come back to planning commission probably next summer if circumstances go back to normal. So we do regular reporting. Actually, don't, this beekeeper requirement actually should be on there, but we do annual reporting on the general plan. Next slide, please. And this is the last part of the plan is, we also do community development block grant work as well. So we, we help implement that program. We report to HCD on how well we're, we're doing with regards to implementing our housing elements. And then we are certified local government, so we have to do certain things to maintain that status and provide a report to the state. And we have to report how we are implementing our, the state water efficient landscape ordinance. So some of the things that, that we are not working on right now, that I mentioned, we're going to find the time to do that some, in the, in the future, is the wireless master plan. I know that was brought up earlier today. It is a funded project and, you know, we have received some public comments on that recently. So we do plan to do it, it is funded. The West Pico Corridor specific plan, we do plan to do that. It's just, right now, we're finding it hard to find, it's hard to find the time to do that. And, and then the other specific plan updates. So I want to give you an idea of what that long-range plan looks like. There's actually a lot on it and it's not necessarily captured on your work plan, but are things that you're going to see throughout the year.
And no dark sky ordinance.
So, so it is on the list and, you know, you know, thanks Chairman Rulon, you did bring it up. So I think we will add that to, you know, this list of items that are, we don't know if we're going to get to it this year, but.
Put it on the plan at least.
And just to, so just to clarify, these are all items that the city council has directed you to take care of, to be, to make progress on? Do I have that right?
Yeah, most of the things, some other things are routine reporting requirements or just routine program functions that we have, right? Community development block grant program.
I, I think this is great to, to show us and to show city council as well. You know, it's a lot going on, yeah.
So I'll, I'll be sure to send this to, to all the planning commissioners too. But I think it would be good to do every year is, is long-range staff present this to the planning commission, just to kind of have that dialogue and then also understand kind of what you see as important.
I agree.
That's my slide, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Any other questions for Gabriel on this?
Yeah, very simple one. Gabriel, I like that beekeeping requirement. I heard about it before. I never know that you guys are working on it. And also, also on local coastal plan, my understanding is the city is sustaining at this moment, so we may or may not continue to work on that. Is that right?
That's correct. We're, we're going to wait to hear from city, city council on how they'd like to move on from that.
And, and the work on the local coastal plan, landing use plan amendment regarding major remodel, that's already done because the city withdrew that.
You withdrew that, correct.
That's because the local staff went against us on the whole recommendation. So the city have pulled it before it diverted by the commission.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
So maybe we'll just go forward for the next twenty years without a local lift on the case. You've been working on it that way for the last forty, why, why change that?
Okay, well, Gabriel, do you need a vote on this for this item or do you have the information you need from us and you can just take that to, to city council? What do you need from us?
So I have the information that I need. It sounded like there was some consensus around it, including Commissioner Crandall's recommendations for training. So I can include that there, unless there's anything else the planning commission wants to include. And what I observed at the city council is, it looks like the, the chair does present that to the, the city council. So if the planning commission, you know, would just want to have some consensus that Chairman Rulon, that you'd be that person or if there's someone else that the.
We want to watch Chairman Rulon do it.
So I can catch the heat. Okay, I'll raise my hand for it, as long as everyone's okay with it.
Yes, of course. You're the chair, that's your job.
You're the chair, it comes with it, it comes with a gavel, dude. I used to have to give a quarterly update to the council. You guys have been, you're getting obdysseal.
They had to keep an eye on you, Don, that's why, so.
Well, I was supposed to keep an eye on you.
Okay, so if you have, you do, Gabriel, if you don't need a vote from us, then it sounds like we're complete with this issue.
Uh, wait, I think I am asking for a recommendation if in this report.
I think you need a vote. I'll make a move forward with the Chair Randall's, Vice Chair Crandall's suggested suggestion.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Crandall. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Rulon votes aye, passes unanimously. So thanks for putting that together, Gabriel.
Thank you.
Next item is number ten, old business, we have none. Item eleven is reports of commissioners and staff. Are there any reports?
Mr. Clinton? On the tentative long-range development agenda, in our book tonight, it shows that the planning commission meeting for the twenty first is canceled versus when we, in our adjournment, on the agenda tonight, we're adjourning to a meeting on the twenty first. I just ask the city planner for clarification.
Yeah, that, you know, then, that, that's correct, Commissioner Brown. We're intending to counsel the planning commission meeting because we actually don't have any reg, application. don't have any regular applications to present before the planning commission. So, um, our recommendation to staff is the planning commission, um, adjourn to the next regular meeting in November.
Okay. So that, so then we'll adjourn to November 4th instead of October 21st.
Correct.
Anything else? Uh, Commissioner Wu?
Oh, I don't really have much. I just want to, um, Gabriel, perhaps you can give us a briefing about our new E-Cactor system, uh, when is it going to take effect? And how does it affect or benefit our planning process?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Wu. Uh, so what Commissioner Wu was referring to is, uh, an update to our permitting, uh, software in the city. So, uh, last night at the city council, uh, our community development director, Cecilia Garde Odaly and Brian Brower from our IT division, uh, presented, um, on how we're going to update that system. We do have a, a system called TrackIt that, uh, we process all our permits through. And, uh, you know, uh, we already implement that today, uh, but I know the city council is interested in us, uh, going more digital with our, uh, applications that we've received. And obviously there's a need for that with COVID, right? Our lobby's been closed. Uh, so planning has been digital with all the application submittals, uh, probably about majority of the applications that we receive are emailed in and processed that way through our TrackIt system. Uh, what we haven't done entirely is, uh, we're not using that entirely with the building, uh, division at this time. Uh, and so in order to do that, it will require an update to that software. Uh, and it's pretty time intensive to do it. We, we did receive grant funding, an amount of, I believe, $200,000 to pay for that. Uh, so that upgrade's going to happen this year. The good thing for planning, it'll, it will create an online portal for the public to be able to submit plans. So instead of right now, we just have a roundabout, about system to do that, which is to email us, but we have to kind of pick it up from there and put it in our system. What the upgrade will allow us to do is have a online portal where the applicant can pay and also submit plans, uh, through that, uh, online portal. So, so that's the plan for the next year. And if you have any questions on that, I can answer it too, because I'm pretty familiar with the system.
Okay, any questions on that?
So you're going to link planning and building together and, uh, with electronic plans and electronic submittal and applications, that was all going to let me get to.
That, yeah, that's correct. And there are some challenges with that. So planning wants to go completely digital with all our, all our submittals, right? So instead of all the big plans that we usually would get from an applicant, like 30 sets, you know, we don't require that anymore. Uh, but there are some challenges trying to make that work, right? We have to send reviews out to the fire department. But the fire department, they're not digital, right? So they still require the paper. Um, so there's, there's all these little parts that we're trying to kind of figure out and we have to work with other agencies to make it work. Uh, so we are in that process, um, of making that work right now. OCFA, they're updating their process because they're having to do that with, uh, impacts of COVID right now.
Okay. Um, well, thank you. Thanks for that update. Um, Commissioner Kozinski, did you have, um, something?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Crandall?
Uh, just to make an adjournment, uh, motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'd move we, um, adjourn to the next regular meeting of the study session and planning commission will be held on November 4th at 6:00 PM via teleconference.
Motion by Crandall, second by Brown. Um, call the roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu? Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Wu votes aye. We're unanimous and we return until November 4th. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.